Okay, well reconvene from closed session and attendance. Everybody is here and public comments pursuant to board policy. Two, three, five, oh, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person or thirty minutes per topic. All speakers would like to comment regarding a matter on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter not on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president, recording secretary prior to the point in the meeting for open forum on non agenda items. Public comment cards are available at the information table at the rear of the boardroom from the recording secretary or online. We ask that all speakers come to the podium to to address the board. So we have. We three. Okay, we're gonna do, okay, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, okay. Pledge of allegiance, Barbara.
Right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item nine point one, agenda approval. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion during none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Recu- item number ten point one, recognition of the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two Associated Student Organization leaders by Dr. Jill Zimmerman.
Good evening, everyone. This is always the best time of the year. I get to work all year with fabulous group of students and then I get to spend the few minutes here sharing all of their great work as we send them off and this year has been particularly interesting because this is the first time we've all been in person. And then we had to go online person and so we backed and forth. And so many of these students, especially the first time on campus, they're all graduating except for our incoming student trustee who you'll meet in just a minute. So I'm gonna have them all come up. I want to tell you a little bit about some of their huge accomplishments. They had three major goals this year. One was to increase student engagement and involvement and having students use health services, their grant process and get involved in clubs and organization. Their second goal was to increase awareness about COVID and we had some folks come from the COVID team come and explain that. And then the second, the third goal was to establish a volunteer corps. It has been one of their goals for a long time and we were able to accomplish that. So they were able to give grants to support our nursing students, our DACA students and just recently competition, if you will, for those students to register on their day of registration ASO sponsored certificates at a random drawing for those students who registered on their day, again, increasing their involvement on campus. They also hosted a Halloween event and they gave out hot chocolate packets at the finals and Christmas time. They also gave out a whole lot of water bottles and. He hasn't shown, that's always the inside joke with one of our students. We have three thousand water bottles. We still have water bottles. They also were able to do a lot of student engagement in an enormous amount of advocacy. In the fall, we went to an online leadership conference. They participated in leadership academy here at the college. They advocated for participatory governance. They served on numerous hiring committees, including the president and the vice president of human resources, as well as some of the dean positions. They were able to advocate for, prior to it closing, the cafeteria to increase better coffee. Students really want a coffee bar and they let that up, they still want coffee. They also included and expanded the hearts and hands pantry. They added laundry cards, which I think is really a great idea for our students. They can spend up to forty dollars just to do their laundry and so ASO has graciously taken care of that. And then they were advocating at the state level. We went to Sacramento and was able to accomplish some of the bills that they were able to support and got to see that legislative process in action in person at our first in-person event. And then the volunteer corps, I want to tell you just a tad bit about that. It's been a goal for a long time and this group was certainly willing to continue to support that. We have established the structure for it. We have some students who signed up. They actually were the ones that participated, some of those students at commencement, as well as at our marauder market. So I just want to introduce you and then I'm gonna let them all, and I have to tell you, I'm not coordinating my hands very well today. My eye infection for the last three weeks is still plaguing me, so I'm gonna. May was our student trust, our student body treasurer for the school year. I'm gonna have you step forward, we're gonna, you know what, we'll deal with the plaques and certificates. Can we do that after that? We'll do that and then we'll get a picture. She, and I'm gonna have each one of them just tell you what they're going to do after the semester, May.
Hi, so this year has been particularly been fruitful for me and I've grown a lot as a student and as a leader on this campus. Oh, I'm transferring to UCLA as an economics major and being as the treasurer for ASO has propelled my interest for that further and I seek a career in the financial economic field later in the career.
Hello, my name's Ivana Doi. I graduated as a psychology major. Being in ASO was one of the best things I did at ABC because I was able to advocate for the students. And so it was the highlight of my ABC career because everything was online except for ASO. And so next semester I am transferring also to UCLA with a psychology degree. And then I also have this summer have a UCLA public health internship, so I have to do that as well. And so I'm really happy to take these skills along with me over to UCLA and just also graduate and be a psychiatrist, hopefully after, so thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Chloe Saldana and here at ABC, I've really expanded upon psychology as a whole entire field, whether it was students' mental health, helping out a peer, spreading awareness about food insecurities. And I pursue also a psychology degree here at ABC. I've now graduated with an AA for transfer and I committed to UCLA. Yes.
Nice to meet you all, I'm Corey, I'm the only one that's not graduating. Apparently y'all know what I'm gonna be doing in a minute, we'll get to that. But man, it's been amazing like being a part of ASO, learning more about what the college culture has to offer. And I believe our ASO was really diverse this year, you know, different nationalities, different backgrounds. Even including, yeah, a lot of stuff like that and we learned a lot, you know, I grew, I got to learn to work cohesively with my peers on campus. We got to do a lot of advocating, like throughout the campus, we talked to our classes. We were advocating to get more students to join ASO. We only, we ended up just coming like probably like five short of a full ASO this year, so yeah, appreciate you all, thank you.
Hello, I am Marlene Lopez, I'm the senator or was, I guess you can say the senator of the math, science and engineering. I am an electrical engineering major and I graduated. I will be transferring to UNLV, which is the University of Nevada, Las Vegas. So I'll be attending there in the fall. And I don't know, ASO and all, obviously, meeting some of my, my, yes, what would you call them, like? Our friends, I want to call them friends, right? I gained a lot of experience with them, knowledge from them, from Dr. Z as well. And I feel like this gave me so a different perspective on life, especially seeing, you know, how the students are and how, what students want throughout school instead of just being like a normal student. So I appreciated my time. What's it called? Speaking for the students within the math, science and engineering department and I hope to bring that to UNLV some sort of way. But yeah, so, thank you.
Hello, members of the board, it's me once again. I am a psychology major and I will be transferring to CSUN in the fall. And it's been, it's been a real fun trip being the ASO president. Everything that we've done in ASO, it cannot have been done without the collective of our efforts and without these amazing people by my side. I don't think many of the things that we've done this semester or last semester would have been accomplished. So it's just, it's just been an amazing time and I really am glad to have had each of them as a officer in ASO.
There are a few members that are not with us tonight, but I want to let you know, they have done an awesome job and I couldn't be more proud of all of them and all of them getting ready to transfer and still have all the time to work on all the things that they did. And part of that, Rosie, you want to come on down? Rosio is also a part of this group, she has been an active member and she also has some exciting plans. She has been very, very involved at the state level as well, has gone to the conferences and has followed them, but has more than anything has really been an advocate in helping to bridge the source students and all the ABC students together. And tell them where you're going, what's your plan?
Hi, it's been a great honor to get to serve on the Board of Trustees. I have gained a lot of experience and knowledge and I really appreciate the opportunity. I'm definitely gonna look back on my time at ABC with great fondness and my time on the board. I will be, I have committed to UC Irvine and I'm also waitlisted at UCLA. I'll be studying political science and I look forward to doing that. And I plan to go to law school in the future. I've also really enjoyed working with everyone in ASO, building great friendships with them and I really appreciate all the hard work Dr. Zimmerman has also put into this group, it's been a great experience, thank you.
Item number ten-three, Minister oath of office of newly elected student trustee.
Okay, raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Corey. Florence.
I solemnly swear or affirm.
I solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental preparation.
Reservation.
Reservation or purpose of.
Evasion.
Evasion.
And I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to.
The duties upon which I'm about to.
Welcome aboard. Item number eleven point one, approval resolution number twenty-one dash twenty-two slash fourteen, naming of the Jack Halliday Senior Hanger for Aviation Studies. Alrighty, and advice, or you ready?
I approve.
Okay. Good job. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, no, passes unanimously.
Rick Shaw came up to me and he says, congratulations, Jack, and I'm like, what for? Almost didn't come to the meeting.
Whereas Jack Halliday Senior has devoted his life since childhood to aviation. And whereas Jack is himself an aviator and pilot. And whereas Jack is a Vietnam War veteran. And whereas Jack is a graduate of the Northrop-Aironautical Institute, served in multiple aerospace positions as an airframe and power mechanic. And whereas the efforts of Jack Halliday directly made the approval of the Federal Aviation Administration for Antelope Valley College's first certified aviation program. And whereas Jack has devoted over thirty-five years to Antelope Valley College as a faculty member, teaching and sharing his skills in aviation with thousands of students. And whereas since the mid nineteen eighties, starting with minimal inadequate space, the physical instruction space for the program had not been dedicated and was moved multiple times. And whereas Jack has been instrumental in the growth of the aviation programs at Antelope Valley College, preparing thousands of students for careers in aviation. And whereas Jack is a recognized leader at the college and in the community, giving unselfishly of his time and talent, now therefore be it resolved and ordered. The Board of Trustees of the Antelope Valley Community College District hereby order the name of the Training Aviation Hanger at Antelope Valley College Educational Facility at Foxfield, Lancaster County of Los Angeles, California, shall immediately and forever become the Jack B. Halliday Senior Hanger for Aviation Studies.
Did I do that? I almost can't remember doing all those things. I guess the greatest, the greatest joy out of it all is the students that have gone through the program and some of them are captains of industry out there, some of them at Northrop, some of them at General Atomics. All these industries around here have, have many, many of our students out there and that gives, gives me the greatest joy. And it makes me humble, you guys humbled me to do such a thing. I don't know, all I ever did was go to work. I can't remember doing anything else, but it's been a joy to work with all of, all the people at the college, all my compatriots, all the instructors here have been really a joy to work with them. AM's over there waving. And to, to thank the board, members of the board and Ed and everybody that's been part of this, this organization. And I'm gonna be around a little while longer, so we'll see how it goes. So I thank you so much and I'm just thunderstruck and overwhelmed, so thank you all.
Thank you. We have item eleven point two, approval of resolution number twenty-one dash twenty-two slash twenty, recognizing Antelope Valley College retirees and.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion during none advice?
I approve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Whereas the Antelope Valley Community College District fulfills its mission to the community through the strength of its employees. And whereas Antelope Valley College has thrived throughout its ninety-three year history because of the talent, skill, professionalism and compassion of its faculty and staff. And whereas Antelope Valley College is recognized as a leader and innovator on state, regional and national platforms. And whereas Antelope Valley College enjoys the loyalty and dedication of its employees, serving students in the community. And whereas Antelope Valley College has been well-served by the following individuals. Jeffrey Ahmad, nineteen eighty-four to twenty twenty-two. Mauro Bozo Galonian, nineteen ninety-nine to twenty twenty-one. Ralph Brax, twenty twelve to twenty twenty-one. Faith Brewer, two thousand eight to twenty twenty-two. Wendy Seos, nineteen eighty-eight to twenty twenty-one. Joanne Costin, two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-one. Steve Epps, nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand twenty-one. Timothy Ferguson, two thousand eleven to two thousand twenty-one. Diane Flores Kagan, two thousand two to two thousand twenty-one. Barbara Fredette, two thousand eight to two thousand twenty-two. Yvonne Harvey, two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty-two. Charles Hood, nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand twenty-two. Tanji Hunter, two thousand ten to two thousand twenty-one. Deborah King, nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand twenty-one. John Kokosa, two thousand one to two thousand twenty-one. Ed Knutson, two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty-two. Gordon Lazarias, nineteen ninety to two thousand twenty-one. Vicky Mathias, two thousand six to two thousand twenty-one. Tyrone Mettler, nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand twenty-two. Monica Mode, two thousand one to two thousand twenty-one. Joseph Owens, nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand twenty-two. Catherine Warre, two thousand twelve to two thousand twenty-one. Ken Sawicki, two thousand one to two thousand twenty-one. Kirk Senate, two thousand five to two thousand twenty-two. Christina Simmons, two thousand seven to two thousand twenty-one. Anthony Sinak- Sinnecker, two thousand eleven to two thousand twenty-two. Curtis Tammy, two thousand eleven to two thousand twenty-one. Sherlene Thatch, nineteen seventy-seven to two thousand twenty-two. Lisa Vath, nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand twenty-two. Joseph Watts, nineteen eighty-eight to two thousand twenty-one. Representing collectively five hundred and eighty-nine years of unselfless dedication, now therefore be resolved by the Antelope Valley College Board of Trustees that each of the aforementioned is recognized and congratulated for their outstanding service and further be it resolved that each of the aforementioned is thanked for their service with its great deepest gratitude. The Board of Trustees wishes them every happiness in their respective retirements adopted this ninth day of May, two thousand twenty-two. And for each of the retirees that are here, we have a resolution signed that you, we'd be happy to give you and we have a photograph that is an aerial view of the college. And on the back of it is, there, there is a poster board that you can use to have your colleagues sign it if you wish. If you're retiring, you don't need a clock. Yeah, if you're here in the, in the room, if you're a retiree, feel free to come up and we'll, we've got a presentation for you.
Okay, item twelve point one, annual report of the Retirement Board of Authority, RBOA.
Good evening, President Knutson, we're President Buffalo Trustees, Student Trustee, congratulations. We're presenting the annual report for the RBOA and I'm gonna introduce Carrie here to begin the presentation.
What an inspirational meeting so far, the young ones coming in and then well, the others leaving out. Let's see, let's slide over, if we go to slide three, if you could. So this is the Retirement Retirement Board of Authority, as you all know, this is our annual presentation. And this is the board that oversees the irrevocable trust where the assets are used to pay other post-employment benefits to help those folks who just retired, make sure they get their medical benefits paid. Three members, the Retirement Board of Authority are listed right there, I see one of them right here. Of course, one right here as well. We meet on a regular basis, typically a couple tons a year. And next slide, and the responsibilities for the RBOA board. Just a quick listing, high-level oversight of the program, adopts and executes the terms of the irrevocable trust. And then we have an investment policy statement, which is the legal document that, that describes what the discretionary, how the discretionary trustee should be managing the money. These are all Brown Act meetings, you're familiar with that, so there's minutes and everything that's associated with that. We document all of that due process in the meeting minutes as well as develop effectively like a history of the meeting. Some catalogs of, it used to be a bunch of binders, but now it's just on a flash drive. But then there's local control, the RBOA dictates to the discretionary trustee, in this case Benefit Trust Company, you know, how they like the money invested and what the purposes are. And then finally, the futurist structure, futurists is the name of the program. It's structured the way it is to mitigate as much liability, fiduciary liability for the district and the RBOA members. Go to the next slide too. It's a three organizations put our, create the team, Keenan Financial Services is the program administrator. They run the whole, the, the whole program. Benefit Trust Company is the discretionary trustee and custodian. They're the ones who sent out the account statements and effectively execute all the investment decisions. My name's Carrie Allen, so I work at Morgan Stanley, we're the registered investment advisor to Benefit Trust. So we make recommendations on the portfolios to Benefit Trust. But all three organizations work in tandem in working with your RBOA. Next slide, a little small print, but last year was a good year, we'll, we'll talk about two thousand twenty-two in just a little bit, focus on twenty-one. You see the portfolio ending value end of twenty-one, a little over four point three million dollars. During last calendar year, there were three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars of contributions. It went up in value about three hundred and seven thousand, it was a good market last year. See the portfolio annual fees right there, thirty-eight thousand. And then in this year, this calendar year from January first, there was another five million forty-six thousand dollar contribution. As you all know, this year has not been so kind in both the stocks and the bond markets. So the March thirty-one value is a little over eight point nine million dollars. Turn to the next page. The first line shows two thousand twenty-one, your portfolio is up ten point eight percent for the calendar year. And since we've started, annualized return of seven point seven five percent. You see some different index numbers there for domestic stocks, international stocks and bonds.
So moving on to accomplishments from two thousand twenty-one. The board reviewed the investment policy. A written summary of this substantive plan for two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one in accordance with GASB requirements was prepared. We continued funding into their revocable trust to lower liability and we met semi-annually to review and discuss the portfolio. Moving on to the goals for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, we continue to have Keenan provide that written summary of the substantive plan in accordance with the GASB requirements and to continue to fully fund the irrevocable trust to, to lower the district's overall liability. That plan was. That plan was fully funded as of six-thirty with that five million dollar transfer there. So. Moving on to the two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one Public Entity Investment Trust Audit. The audited irrevocable trust fund had a balance of three point eight five seven million as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. The auditing firm reviewed investment evaluation to ensure fair valuation, investment policy, and OPEP compliance. There were no audit findings or recommendations in this audit. Any questions?
Any questions? As you know, currently, the stock market bouncing around. Does that affect our investments?
It does, but I'm going to let Carrie speak to that.
And and not only the stock market, but more surprisingly, the bond market. I don't mean to shock you by saying this, but this has been the worst start to a year for bonds since the twenties. With interest rates going up so much because of inflation, the Federal Reserve was behind the times in doing things about inflation. They've got a little late start, so interest rates went way up. So yes, both the stock and the bond markets are down this year, which is surprising because typically when stocks are down, there's a flight to quality and the bonds are up. We didn't get that this year. But the the year is young and well, things will get a little better. But definitely, we got to get this inflation under control. And we certainly anticipate or expect the Federal Reserve to continue to raise short-term rates quite a bit, at least through the summer and probably in the next year or two.
Thank you.
You bet.
No other questions? Okay. Thank you. Item twelve point two, construction update.
Good evening again. Tonight, I'm presenting the construction update for Measure AV Capital Projects. I'll begin by giving an overview of the Measure AV budget. As it stands now, some of the challenges we're experiencing due to increased expenses. And then I'll conclude by giving an update on each of the projects. Measure AV began with total funding of three hundred and fifty million. Of that three hundred and fifty million, twenty-five point eight million went to debt reduction. Thirty-five million is budgeted for the MNO Endowment, four million for bond personnel audit expenses. And then we budgeted and expended funds on various smaller non-building projects such as design standards, equipment, IT projects. And we have four point nine million budgeted for program management, general conditions, and logistics. These non-construction or administrative planning and other expenses total seventy-seven million. Out of three hundred and fifty million, that then leaves two hundred and seventy-three million boxed in red for construction-related projects. In the next column over is the amount expended. And in the final column is the remaining project budget. Of the two hundred and seventy-three million allocated for building and construction, Swing Space One was nine point eight million. The Measure AV portion of the Palmdale Center was six point two million. Campus security was eight point seven million. And Sage Hall was twenty-eight point one million. The total budget for completed projects was fifty-two point eight million. Again, taking fifty-two point eight million from the two hundred and seventy-three million leaves a budget of two hundred and twenty million for projects in construction and Projects currently in construction are shown here and include infrastructure, Discovery Lab, Marauder Complex, student services, and the main entry. The total budgeted for these projects is one hundred and eleven point seven million. And taken back from the remaining two hundred and twenty million leaves one hundred and That one hundred and eight million was allocated between the gym renovation, Cedar Hall, and the Commons. That in aggregate is how the three hundred and fifty million was allocated. Now, these projects have not been bid, and these budgets were built using previous inflation rates. Okay? Taking into account increased inflation through two thousand twenty-five, the budgets increased significantly from a hundred and eight million to approximately a hundred and twenty million for the upcoming projects alone, putting us over budget by eleven point five million. That would not leave us with sufficient budget to complete the Commons, which was intended for student groups and would have included a new cafeteria, bookstore, and house and student life spaces. Shown here is an alternative plan that meets the district's needs and would allow us to increase net square footage by forty-five hundred square feet and add additional projects as well. This plan involves keeping and renovating the student center, the old learning center, and the ME building. Additional projects that be added include part of the outdoor fitness gym landscaping along with a reserve of six million for unanticipated expenses. The total cost of these projects is anticipated to be ninety-nine point six million. And although we show an eight point eight million dollar surplus, we're not budgeting that due to in a projected increased expenses. The changes or additions include the learning center, which would be student-focused building and add fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand square feet. The student center would include the bookstore, dining room, and student spaces, student programs, and add twenty-seven thousand square feet. The ME building would add ninety-three hundred square feet. The outdoor gym is against student focus and adds seven thousand square feet. The landscaping project would improve aesthetics and integrate campus pathways. And now I'll provide an update on Measure AV projects, beginning with the completed projects. Swing Space One was built to allow for construction. This project included modulars for additional classrooms and office space and includes buildings T three hundred, T four hundred, T five hundred, T seven hundred, and T seven oh one. The project was completed in May, two thousand twenty. Palmdale Center, this project renovated fifty-five thousand square feet and services the needs of the Palmdale community, offering classrooms, laboratories, library, learning center, bookstore, and student services. This project was completed in March, two thousand eighteen. Campus security, this is a fifty-six hundred square foot building that houses security and serves as the district emergency operations command center. This project is in the closeout phase. Sage Hall provides tutoring and instructional space for individual and group instruction. The building is thirty-two thousand square feet and provides classrooms, a computer lab, flexible and interactive learning environments. Infrastructure and portable take relocation includes various infrastructure and utility upgrades throughout campus. The intersection and bus stop for the new main entry off of Thirtieth West is a part of this project. We anticipate that portion of the project to be completed in November of two thousand Discovery Lab is a thirty-five thousand square foot technical education facility that supports welding, fire technology, electronics programs, and avionics. The grand opening for this building is on May twelfth. This is a state-of-the-art, beautiful building that we're extremely proud of. Shown here are additional pictures from the exterior and the main interior corridor of Discovery Lab. The Marauder Complex provides twenty-two thousand square feet of usable space at the Marauder Stadium. It includes team locker room, restrooms, training space, laundry equipment, meeting and office space. The landscaping and fencing should be completed over summer, and the last modular building is in construction and should arrive in August. Project completion is anticipated for January, two thousand twenty-three. Shown here are the locker room, the equipment room, and strategy room. The Student Services Building will replace this current building, although it will not include the boardroom. The building will provide fifty-eight thousand square feet for enrollment, counseling, financial aid, health and veteran services. Anticipated completion is expected in December of two thousand twenty-two. Shown here is the, shown here is the front entrance view from the second floor and interior office space. Student Space Two allows for the demolition of existing spaces in Mesquite Hall, Yushida Hall, F A four, and includes the T six hundred modulars south of the tennis courts. We expect the project to be completed in May of twenty-three. Shown here is the entrance from the west side and the view from the interior access Campus wayfinding and main entry includes the new entryway and updated signage and wayfinding throughout campus that align with the campus's new design standard. The project is expected to be completed in January of twenty-three. Moving on to upcoming projects, the rim of the gym renovation reprograms existing facility for space utilization. It'll undergo a complete modernization of building systems and finishes. The project is split funded between Measure AV and state funding, which will pick up sixty percent of the total cost. At this time, the anticipated completion date is January, two thousand twenty-four. And finally, we have Cedar Hall, a three-story, sixty-five thousand square foot state-of-the-art building that'll house classrooms and faculty offices and will include a dedicated boardroom. The building will be built on the existing footprint of this building here. And construction will start immediately after this building is vacated. We expect this project to be completed in January of two thousand twenty-five. Looking ahead, we plan to submit RFPs for architectural services and renderings for the student center and the ME building. We look forward to begin work on the facilities master plan, which will update our campus plan and hopefully allow us to consider space utilization after the pandemic. And finally, we plan to move forward with the final bond issuance for Measure AV, which is expected to total one hundred and five million. We anticipate needing more cash in approximately nine months. Questions?
I have a few questions. On the first page, you talk about debt reduction, twenty-five million dollars. Where does the money come to reduce the debt? Is that from the taxpayers or is that from investments or what? How does that fund?
So that debt reduction included twelve point one million, which was lease revenue bonds that were paid off. It included six million in central plant debt from, I believe it was Bank of America, and a cop of seven point six five million, so certificate of participation that the district had for seven point six million. So all of those were financed by Measure AV.
Okay. You listed these improvements at the Palmdale Center. Now, the Palmdale Center is owned by a private person. And are we going to be compensated for those buildings when we vacate that premises?
Those improvements at the Palmdale Center were improvements in the interior space and the exterior space, excuse me, and we're in a, in a, I believe, a twenty-plus-year lease for that. So that is going to be a long-term facility. So those improvements are for the district's use.
So if we ever vacate that facility, will we be reimbursed for those?
No, sir.
I think I know the answer to it, but I think I want to hear it from you. One of the buildings, when, when this three hundred and fifty million dollar bond was passed, that I was very, very happy to see being constructed because I think it had a lot of elements that were, were considered that would benefit the community, and that was the Commons. So if I understand you correctly, the Commons is out.
The Commons is out as of this time. We don't have sufficient funding to build the Commons at this time.
But the services that were provided in that building are being redistributed in the other projects as the outline.
Okay. Thank you, President Knutson.
And it's, I'm sorry, I just want to follow up on Barbara's question. Is the reason why we don't have the funding for the Commons is the increase in cost and construction materials, some of the things?
Yes, yes, ma'am. It's primarily driven by increased inflation, increased costs. As the projects extend on, we're incurring additional costs, and those costs are coming in higher than anticipated. So right now, we're just looking ahead at future projects that haven't yet been bid. We have to, we have to include inflation at, at the rates that we're seeing currently. Doing that, we're, we're behind at least eleven million dollars, and we can't build a partial building.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving along to the item thirteen point one, open forum and non-agenda items. And we have, I believe, four, four cards. Eugene Hernandez.
Yeah, I'd like to address. Yeah, I'd like to address the incoming president of Antelope Valley College. I would like to, I'm a nineteen ninety-eight graduate of this college. Now, I'd like to emphasize that with the growing population of Latino students being the majority here at the college, I wish there'll be an emphasis to create a Chicano Studies Department here on campus and to encourage the employment of more Chicano teachers here at this college. I think that's only a fair and equitable achievement and goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pamela Ford.
All the recognition makes the statement more heartening. I'm Pamela Ford, president for the Federation of Classified Employees. I'm here before you tonight to recognize two employees who we have recently lost. Mr. Brian Keys, who was an employee for about seven years and a union member since February twenty-two. He was an instructional aide. He was a person with definite opinions and was not afraid to share them. He will be missed by those who knew him. And now for Frank Odell. I think all who knew Frank Odell were shocked at the sudden loss of our friend. And to many folks, Frank was family. And to this campus, he was an institution. Frank's situation has brought people together who thought they had nothing in common, built bonds with those who maybe had been apart for a while, and hardened us all to not take life for granted, and above all, to tie up loose ends. At age seventeen, Frank started as a custodian and moved into being a skilled maintenance worker. Frank served this campus for over forty years. More than that, some often took Frank for granted until they took the time to really listen to him. He knew this campus like the back of his hand, and he was the ultimate cheerleader for ABC. If those of you who remember know that he did the scoring for the games. And he was a supporter of the Union since nineteen ninety-one. And of course, his favorite thing, he was a ham radio operator. Because of the circumstances of Frank's passing, I think about the Book of Matthew that says when he was sharing how God remembers every living thing, even when a sparrow falls. And in the scripture in Matthew ten twenty, which says, "Two sparrows sell for a coin of value, do they not? Yet not one of them will fall to the ground without your Father's knowledge." Our friend, our brother Frank is gone, but never for, never forgotten. And I do hope that the college will do something to recognize him. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam, you have another item. You want to go ahead and address that? You want to go ahead and address that?
At the last board meeting, for transparency, I asked about the Leadership Academy in terms of funding in the upcoming trip to Big Bear. And I was, I noticed that there's nothing on the agenda, no responses. So I'm wondering, what is the budget for this trip? What is the funding source? Will classified be attending this? If so, will this be considered a work activity? And I'm wondering, if this is a campus-funded event, then why is it not reflected on the travel document in the board packet? So those are my questions for that item.
The Leadership Academy is a voluntary activity for which people apply and they engage in a year-long activity and it is across several employee constituent groups for the college. No district funds are used.
Last speaker, Jason Bowen.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for listening to me tonight. Thank you for the chocolate and peppermint candies. And congratulations to all of the honorees tonight. It's encouraging. What we've had since nineteen twenty-nine, when ABC was founded, was, has been enormous success. We found significant success. However, though we found significant success, we can also do significantly better, especially with regards to the students who are no longer in school. Enrollment is low, generally speaking, due to the knock-on effects caused by the pandemic. From the data I've seen here in the A V, the reasons for low enrollment are financial and also the related reason that students and former students are reconsidering whether college is worth a significant investment. The task at hand then is improving enrollment. Not only that, but when we manage to enroll new students and prior students, we need to retain them. This is difficult, has been difficult in this environment where consultants and lawyers are running our school or, for example, the human resource director does not sit down at the negotiations table to negotiate the faculty collective bargaining agreement. It's difficult when there's little trust. It's difficult, nigh impossible, to serve the students as effective as we can when apathy is so prevalent amongst faculty and classified staff. Fixing our environment allows us to be our best. We've done great, but we can be better. We can be greater inspirations to our students. And we may then, absent hypocrisy, make the case that hard work and investment in education are worth it and that success can be obtained without engaging in or tolerating corruption and/or sickle fancy, where by corruption I mean abusing one's position of authority for personal and selfish gain. This is why I'm excited for a new president. I have hope that in the coming years, we may roar back better than we've ever been in our history. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, item fourteen point one was a report of closed session action. Item four point three, consideration of public employee discipline dismissal release of employee number twenty, there's twenty-one slash E dash zero zero seven on a motion by Mr. Adams and a second by Ms. Gaines with a five oh vote. The board approved the separation agreement. Item four point four, public employment superintendent president, government code five four nine five seven. A motion was made by Mr. Adams, seconded by Ms. Gaines. With a five oh vote, the board approved the superintendent president employment contract for Dr. Jennifer Zellit. And that's the only items. Okay. Moving along to consent calendar. Do we have a motion? You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I want to pull fifteen point eight, please.
Okay, item fifteen point eight. Okay, we're going to pull fifteen point eight, fifteen point three, fifteen ten, fifteen eleven. Okay? All right.
Mr. Vice President, could we talk about fifteen point eight?
No, hold on. We have to vote on this. We have a motion. So it's agreed to removing those items. Mr. Adams, you're most in stands.
Yes.
We have a second from Ms. Gaines. And any further discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor? Okay. Okay, let's start with item fifteen point three, Pamela Ford.
Positions were approved of the reorganization and have not been noted on the personnel schedule, and I was just wondering if there's a reason for that.
Okay. Okay, item. Okay, let's go to item fifteen point eight, bookstore balance sheet income statement, March two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mr. Vice President. I was looking at the statement for the bookstore. And I'm wondering, are we still getting COVID funds to help manage the store?
We have outsourced the store, but we did recognize lost revenue for the prior year. We're not recognizing it for this year because it is now outsourced.
So is that the bookstore under Barnes and Noble now?
Yes, sir.
So, okay. I remember the last meeting I talked to you about converting the bookstore to a public bookstore and you mentioned that our contract was ripped these division of Barnes and Noble that deal with colleges.
Yes, sir.
Is it possible in the next month or so, if you talk to someone from Barnes and Noble, find out if any of their stores are kind of consumer oriented, even though they're college bookstores? If there's any one in that mix?
We can definitely look further into that. We did have a conversation regarding being cafe and the possibility to have a cafe-type store like they have in some of their retail outlets.
Right.
That conversation is, is, will happen. It's something that we're looking into and that that meeting will occur. So we'll proceed further with looking into that.
That would work with any construction you're going to do in that building too, so you know, we could get it all together.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. We have a motion. You second?
Second.
Okay. Any further questions? Advice? All in favor? Okay, now let's go back. Item fifteen three, appointment administrators, faculty and classified personnel. Do we have a motion on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor? Item fifteen point ten. Ms. Ford. Well, we just have a card from you. So we were waiting for you to. No.
We can, you can take the motion in a second and then open this.
Okay. So, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, before you have discussion, the member of the public would speak before. The member of the public does not get to engage in the board's discussion of the agenda item. So if she would, if she would like to speak.
Your card for fifteen ten, Pamela.
Oh, fifteen ten. I'm asked, I'm just asking about why the increase. That's all.
This is a part of the plan that was just presented, the outdoor space. So what this does is it increases the budget and measure A B for this particular project. It does not increase the overall expenditures like we discussed in the previous outline there. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any discussion, thoughts? Hearing none advice? All in favor? See, item fifteen ten?
Fifteen eleven.
Fifteen eleven. Ms. Ford, fifteen eleven. Okay, we have a motion. Second? Okay.
The per, I was wondering about the purpose and the net and necessity for moving these funds around.
Funds are moved regularly to accommodate expenses. A monthly review of the budget is done to align expenses and move budget where needed.
All righty. Advice? Okay, all in favor? Okay, that motion's approved. And so we're going to move on to the action items, sixteen point one, approval of resolution twenty-one dash twenty-two slash seventeen, declaring the fertility of public bidding for a human resource recruitment system. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. If someone could explain to me what this is about, please.
Yes, this is for the application software that we use to manage recruitments for all positions in the college. It's called NeoGov. It matches up with the rest of the state.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor? As you know, it's like, item sixteen point two. And we have a card, so. Yeah, okay, basically, do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll open this up and I believe we have a card here, Eugene Hernandez.
Yeah, I have a question regarding diversity. Why are you spending spending money and time on the Juneteenth celebration when the college is not in session? Yet you did nothing for the March celebration of Cesar Chavez Day. You know, I think that's a grave injustice that his, his honor was not respected. And I, and I, again, I emphasize that you should emphasize our heroes, our people who have accomplished a lot. And I think that's a grave oversight.
The holidays that are recognized at the college are a negotiated item.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor? Okay, item sixteen point three, approval of resolution twenty-one dash twenty-two slash nineteen, classified employee employee week of May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Is there a motion?
So move.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor? Okay, item sixteen point four, approval of resolution number twenty-one dash twenty-two slash twenty-one, declaring the fertility of bidding for media support services. Is there a motion? There's a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor? Okay, item sixteen point five, approval of resolution number twenty-one dash twenty-two slash twenty-two for any object? Now, put me, yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, any is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all advice? All in favor? Item sixteen point seven, approval to enter into an agreement with Christopher W. Hine, D B A Law Office of C W Hine for Guest Investigative Services. You have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I believe we have a card by Ms. Ford.
It's on, okay. So this is sixteen point seven is for the approval of investigative services. And I was just wondering, had the contract ended with Walt Johnson, which was approved a few months ago? And if not, could someone explain the need for the expense of hiring another investigator?
The contract with Walt Johnson and Associates is still in effect. The district has an obligation to investigate matters from time to time and to determine whether or not there could potentially be a conflict of interest or if matters require a different type of expertise. One investigator, just like when you go to the doctor, you don't see one doctor for all of your body. You see a different type of doctor depending on what the issue or the need is. Mr. Hine will provide investigative services in the areas that are specified. They're in the public content background in terms of the various procedures, Title Nine, and other matters that may come up.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor? Okay, moving along to item sixteen point eight, approval. Oh, Jason Bowen.
The Federation had a similar question. Why are we hiring this consultant? It seems like what Keenan and Associates does.
I can further elaborate. We have a potential issue that requires specific talent and must be independent.
Okay. A little motion on the floor, right? We've passed it. Okay. Item sixteen point eight. All righty, is there a motion? And let me read it. Approval of agreement between Collegiate Enterprises Solution LLC, D B A Registry for College and University Presidents from May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two through October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and we have a card by Mr. Bowen.
So what we have here is another example of consultants and lawyers running our college. In this particular case, salary is equivalently one hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred dollars. That's not necessarily concerning, at least at the moment. It's the thirty percent fee tacked on per year of sixty-three thousand, eight hundred eighty-eight dollars. That's incredible waste, in my opinion. We could have a vice president of student services who's not working through a consultant agency.
Thank you. Sure.
The thirty-three percent consultant fee means that we are not paying health and welfare benefits which far exceed thirty-three percent.
No, no, I'm sorry. You know, we have the guidelines and the rules, so that's the explanation. And so we're gonna move, any other questions from up here? Hearing none advice?
Are approved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item sixteen point nine. Approval of Antelope Valley College Confidential Management Supervisory and Administrative Administrator, CMSA employees COVID nineteen emergency remote work technology stipend. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Is this paid for with state funds, emergency funds?
No. Paid for with federal funds.
Any other questions? Question? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item sixteen point ten. Approval of independent contractor agreement with Peter DiArman, DBA Kern Delta Communications for Consulting in the Marketing Office in the absence of the executive director. Do we have a motion? For second?
Second.
Okay, we have speaker card, Jason Bowen.
This is yet another example of consultants and lawyers running our school. In this case, serving in the absence of an executive director of marketing.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. And any further discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item sixteen eleven approval of independent contract agreement with Alana Com, I'm not sure how you pronounce it. He kinda, yeah, yeah, anyway. LLC DBA Lighthouse Studios for Freelance Services for Design Photography and/or Videography. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point twelve approval of memorandum, memorandum of understanding, M O U. between Antelope Valley College Federation of Classified Employees, A V C F C E and Antelope Valley Community College District, A B C C D regarding the bookstore layoffs. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I wanted to say that I was happy to read about this, that the employees who were laid off in the bookstore were offered other employment on campus and other jobs. So people that lost their jobs had other opportunities to get jobs, and I praise the college for doing that. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point three. Thirteen, excuse, excuse me, missed the one. Approval of memorandum of understanding between Antelope Valley Partners for Health, A V P H. and Antelope Valley College for Wraparound Services to the students living in the shared housing facilities from July first, two thousand twenty-one to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I have a copy of this memorandum of understanding between Antelope Valley's Partners for Health and A V. College. And down in part three, it said, District will provide access to homes and contact information for students in shared housing facility. District will provide funds to A V. P H. at the end of the month. Point four, District and A V. P H. will work collaboratively to provide services and resources to students in shared housing to enhance their educational success. What, how are we gonna enhance their educational success?
They won't be living on the street.
How many students are we talking about in the shared?
Jill, how many have you got?
Thank you.
Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point fourteen approval of academic policies and procedures, A P. And P. Committee Course Listing. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point fifteen approval of amendment to the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, and two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three academic calendars to observe the Juneteenth holiday. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. One of the speakers mentioned that we don't honor Cesar Chavez. I hope in the future that the college will be able to observe his birthday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point sixteen. Approval of increase of grant award for raising scholars grant by one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars annually from July first, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Their motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point seventeen approval of agreement number two with Cypress Risk Management for Student-Athlete Accident Insurance Coverage. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point eighteen approval of consultant service agreement with Teresa Reed to present its Not Drama, It's Trauma workshops for the period of June third, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point nineteen approval to ratify the agreement with Arthur Gensler, Jr. and Associates Incorporated for the Facilities Master Plan, RFP, A V. C. two thousand twenty-one slash two thousand twenty-two dash seven. Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point two oh. Approval to purchase facility service cards utilizing Polaris Sourcewell Agreement, number twelve two 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 oh dash P S. I. With Herf Funds, Higher Education Emergency Relief Funds. And is there a motion?
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point two one approval to utilize cooperative contract held by Advanced Technologies Consultants Incorporated for the district's classroom and teaching aids, goods, and services needs. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point two two approval to extend the use of the Foundation for California Community Colleges Cooperative Agreement with H. S. H. I. International Corporation for the Purchase of Software Reseller Services through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point two three approval of services agreement with AccuGov Incorporated and Antelope Valley College for installation of open lab CDS workstation software. Is there a motion?
So move.
Okay, any, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point two four approval of contract for Bowman Asphalt Incorporated Parking Lot Paving Project twenty-two dash zero one eight with district funds. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Mr. President, was this granted by competitive bidding?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point two five approval to utilize the approved cooperative piggyback agreement for Snap-on Industrial, a division of I D. S. C. Holdings LLC with NASPO ValuePoint. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Are approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point two six approval to award bid number A V. C. two thousand twenty-one slash two thousand twenty-two dash eleven rooftop air handling system with scheduled maintenance funds. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, nobody opposed, right? Okay. Item sixteen point two seven approval of insurance program coverage extension proposal and statewide educational wrap-up program for infrastructure project seventeen dash two nine with Measure A V. Funds. Is there a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point two eight approval of insurance program coverage extension proposal and statewide educational wrap-up program for campus intersection Phase One Avenue J. Twelve and Thirty-first Street Intersection. Item, it's seventeen dash zero three eight with Measure A V. Funds. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point two nine. Approval of change orders for Sage Hall seventeen dash zero three one with Measure A V. Funds. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice? Advice?
Oh, approve.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Sixteen point three oh approval of project assignment amendment to Lundgren Management Infrastructure Project seventeen dash zero three nine with Measure A V. Funds. Is there a motion?
So move.
Okay, all right. Any discussion?
Yes. Okay. Steve, you said seventeen oh three nine is seventeen oh two nine?
Oh, two nine. It stands corrected, seventeen oh two nine. Good catch. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point three one approval of project assign, assignment amendment to Desmond Meyer Construction Company Incorporated, Discovery Lab Project seventeen dash zero three nine with Measure A V. Funds. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item sixteen point three two approval of project assignment amendment with Cummings, Coming Management Group Incorporated for Labor Compliance, Compliance Services, Cedar Hall Project eighteen dash zero two one with Measure A V. Funds. Is there a motion?
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes.
You, you've got a motion, a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, any discussion?
Yes. We were mentioning about A V. Funds, we're short of A V. Funds, so we, A V., these are A V. Bond Funds that are being used for these things. Okay. We're talking about, we have a shortage, we can't build new buildings and so forth. But are A V. Fund, Bond Funds supposed to be used for buildings? And are we using those funds for other services?
These services are, are for the buildings themselves. So the, the use of those funds is for our capital projects. So yeah, these are all required uses. For example, this is labor compliance that we're using.
So anything that's related to the capital project, even though it's not the brick and mortar?
Yes, sir.
You can use the funds for.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Any, any further discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item sixteen point three three approval to file notice of completion, resolution of acceptance on the Sage Hall Project seventeen dash zero three one for inland building construction companies incorporated with Measure A V. Funds. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point three four approval to file notice of completion and resolution of acceptance on the Sage Hall Project seventeen dash zero three one for Kincaid Industries Incorporated with Measure A V. Funds.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen point three five approval to file notice completion, resolution of acceptance on the Sage Hall Project seventeen dash zero three one for Sierra Lathing Company Incorporated with Measure A V. Funds. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice? All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have information items, which is seventeen point one, two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-two, twenty-one dash twenty-two diversity events. And so. Okay. All right, now we're gonna move on to reports and announcements. And it's Tamira Palmetto, disdain.
Yes. All right, good evening, everyone. I'm Tamira Palmetto of Spain, Vice President of Senate-elect and working right after I got elected. So here we go, this is from Van. Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees and President Knutson. The Academic Senate celebrates the honor granted to Jack Holiday Senior. Professor Holiday is a respected faculty member and expert in aviation technology and a longtime senator. We also recognize and congratulate the retiring faculty in tonight's resolution. We appreciate the many years of their dedication and service to the students and the college. The Senate fully supports the district's commitment to diversity and action item sixteen point two. We invite the board to continue to develop, to continue development of policies, processes, and practices that will embed core values of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Finally, the Senate is pleased to announce the Senate Executive that I will be the VP. All right, first officer, first executive officer will be Mark McGovern, and the second executive officer will be Brian Pelagala. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Item eighteen point two and Antelope Valley Federation Teachers, and it's Dr. Jason Bowen.
Good evening, I'm serving as a proxy for ABC of T. President Aurora Byrd. We, we would first like to say thank you to a former student trustee, Rosia Rivera. She was absolutely wonderful, and we're gonna miss her. However, we would like to congratulate Corey Barnes for his new role. And personally, I was emotional sitting there watching you take that oath. So thank you very much. You reminded me of, of what it is we're all fighting for. We'd like to make an additional comment regarding commencement. It was an absolute success. There were so many people, I mean, people just waiting to jump out of their homes, I suppose, after, I mean, I don't know if the pandemic is officially over or not, but you'd think it was over, seeing all those people there. The overflow sections were filled to capacity. I, you know, was sitting next to Dr. Luis Lucero, and I was commenting to him as students were walking down the ramp. And what I had forgotten, especially over the last And what I had forgotten, especially over the last two years, was what it felt like to have some serious success in life. And the looks on the faces of these students. Now, I'll tell you what, to be honest, I kept looking to see if people kept coming up to fill the line back up. But, and so I, I was talking to Dr. Lucero, I commented, you know, everyone's a drop in the bucket here, right? But when you grab that piece of paper and you stand next to the president and take that picture, you feel like you're the most important person on earth. And I remember that I felt like that when I took uh, my picture with the, the chancellor at U C Riverside when I got my degree. So it, I just, I'm looking forward to the next commencement. I normally take every other year off, but I think I'm going to certainly attend the next commencement. Uh, we also want to remark that we were proud of the presidential search process. We feel that, you know, there was input from the community, there was high turnout at the forums, and we're, we're pleased with the level of participation that we saw. So I think these are just some positive things uh, the Federation wants to highlight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item eighteen point three, Antelope Valley College Federation Classified Employees, Ms. Ford.
I agree with Jason that the the search for president was we appreciate the process. Um, I want, there was a lot of congratulations tonight, and there's a lot of excitement that's gone on with our campus for our students who went through commencement. That's always a heartening occasion. Also, congratulations to Rosia, who served so well as a student trustee. Congratulations, Corey, incoming student. I feel proud. Um, also, Jack Halliday. I've known Jack since, since I stepped on this campus way back when, and just seeing him dressed up was enough, but the award was amazing. Um, also, uh, just congratulations to everybody. It's time to party. Um, I also wanted to address that it's my hope that in honor of Frank Odell, who is, I said before, is an institution of this campus, that the district will some way perhaps honor him by naming a building after him. Also, I received an email from a disheartened and concerned hourly employee, and I will share a portion of the statement with you. He was wondering why short-term hourly students who were working during the pandemic and who also did a lot of the real work around the campus during that time were not even considered for even a small amount. And we went through the same, they said, he said they went through the same things that other employees went through, and some of them even had to be on campus working while everyone else was at home. So they would like to have consideration given to them. I know I don't represent the hourly employees, but I think his, uh, comment deserves mention, and I've asked, I've asked him to submit his concern to the president. Because you see, classified aren't just concerned with classified. We're concerned with the campus as a whole. Um, lastly, I want to mention that, um, the Federation and District will be moving to mediation in a week concerning the perp charge. And you as board members, I hope, will support bringing closure to this matter. And, um, I'm looking forward to a new leader, a new beginning, and moving forward in a positive way. And I sincerely hope that this individual can bring, bring unity back to the campus and raise the morale. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, confidential management supervisory administrative employees, Michelle? Michelle? Oh, good, there you are.
Trying to get a jump start there.
Yeah. Well, I lost you, looked over here, you were gone.
Uh, good evening. Um, first, I'd like to congratulate, um, all of the graduates this year. We're tw- class of twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. We did it all um, this last week. So congratulations to the graduates and congratulations to the teams of volunteers and professionals who made those, um, ceremonies happen for the students. Um, so we know that it's life-changing for them, and we're just glad to be a part of their journey. Um, I'd also like to thank all of the, um, honorees for tonight, all of the years of dedication and hard work. Um, and the recognition, condolences to those that we've recently lost, and welcome to Dr. Jennifer Zalit to our campus. Thank you.
Okay, our student trustees not here, neither's Diane Knipple, is that correct? Oh, well, we just had her. I just want to make sure. Okay. Okay, um, and Diane's not here. Uh, Mr. Knutson.
Just very briefly, a welcome to Corey Barnes as student trustee. I'm sure everybody's looking forward to working with you over the next year. And Rosio, congratulations on your acceptance at one of your schools. I know she's got a whole list, so I hope and wish you all the best in your future, and always remember that you have a home here, and if you need anything, you have but to ask. As far as commencements, it's the best day of the year for me. And, uh, this past Friday marked my fortieth commencement, not my own. So Jason, I agree with you. I can't tell you how much fun it is to see the joy and excitement on those faces when they come across the platform, and then hearing the hoopin' and hollerin' over that comes out of the stands. Uh, it doesn't change from institution to institution, and I, I, I I know that sometimes, but we keep it under two hours, and I think we were close to nine hundred on Friday that walked, but we had, uh, right at twenty-two hundred students actually complete.
Corey?
Thank you, everybody. So I just wanted to say, I appreciate the board, you know, um, y'all made a tough decision with this president. And, uh, I really liked the woman. I liked it all of them. You know, that showed that, you know, y'all had the chance to not go with anybody, and had y'all did that, I would have probably lost a little faith in the board, but y'all showed me that y'all believe in the structure of A B C. Y'all believe in our faculty, our students, our staff that help put those president candidates in the, in the mix. Y'all chose one of them, and I appreciate y'all for that. And sorry to see you go, Mr. Knutson. Uh, and I'm sorry I never came to one of the coffee with the president, you know, but hey, I get to meet you, you know, and I'm, I'm excited to work with you guys. Thank you.
Uh, welcome, Corey. Looking forward to working with you over the next year as well. And Rosio, you did a great job. Absolutely one of the best student trustees we've ever had, and I go back a long way, so I've gone through quite a few. One of the first people I met on campus was through my wife, and, uh, she, when she was, uh, administrative assistant in language arts, and Frank Odell walked in the office, and he was just doing something, fixing something like he always was. And my wife introduced him as one of the best people on campus to know. And, uh, so he was one of the very first people I met, and from that day forward, um, anytime I ever saw him on campus, he had a smile, a wave, um, how you doing kind of a thing. Over the last few years, I've gone to a lot of the soccer games at the, at the stadium, and Frank was doing the public address announcements for the soccer teams, and I felt so sorry for him. Because our soccer coaches are not nice. They would do massive replacements of personnel almost on a five-minute basis. They would take five players out, pull five players in. The other coach would go, okay, well, I'm going to take five players out and put five players in. And Frank is, is, I, I could see him up in the booth. Frank is going through his sheets and is, is trying to get all the names right, that, as who's going out, because he, because he's looking to see the numbers of the players that are leaving and the numbers that are going on to the field, and he just, he did such a great job. It was just a a hard job, but he, he made it look easy. And he, he always did a great job on the names, because soccer players, long names. Um, so he always did a great job, uh, doing that, and, uh, after one of the long periods of time where we had a lot of substitutions and stuff, I just look up there and I go, and he go. Like, like, I don't know, I don't know. So, so, um, I, I would suggest that we name the football stadium public dress announcers booth for Frank. It was his home for quite a few years, and, uh, and having his name on that door, I think, would, would be very appropriate.
Um, first of all, I want to thank our new trustee, student trustee, and our past student trustee for your service to the college, both of you. Graduation was fantastic. I enjoyed giving out a couple hundred diplomas and seeing the faces and feeling so proud. As far as our new president, there it was discussed retention of students and recruitment. So that's going to be, uh, one of the projects that our new president will take in the coming years. Thank you.
Yes?
Yes, um, good afternoon, everyone. First of all, I want to give my condolences to those of our A B C family who has passed. I didn't know Mr. Odell, but forty years, Ms. Ford, I heard you, of commitment is a long time, so I'm looking forward to working with Mr. Adams and the rest of the board to see what we can do for Mr. Odell. I want to congratulate both the graduates and the retirees. Both are very, uh, big milestones, and so congrats for that. Um, also, welcome, Corey. We are very proud to have you here, and Rosio, you will be missed. Uh, anything we can do for you, please let us know. Uh, Dr. Zalit, I want to tell her, uh, welcome, and we look forward to working with her. And my last thing is have a happy Memorial Day.
Okay, um, I first want to, um, uh, congratulate all of our retirees this evening. There was quite a, quite a list of them, and I I want to thank them, uh, for their service to Antelope Valley Community College, and I hope, uh, retirement is everything that, uh, it's supposed to be, um, as they move forward in the next chapter of their life. Um, Dr. Jill's, uh, I just want to say to you, and I know there's a team here involved, but every year at graduation, just watching you, uh, I, I don't know how you just don't like, just pass out out there, because I get nervous just watching you a little bit, but every year, it's, it's, it's outstanding and to, so to you and your whole team. I don't know who else on the team, and I know Patty does a lot and, and Ed as well, but it, it's always such a beautiful event. And it is great to stand up there and just see the looks on their faces, and they're just so giddy with excitement. It is a big day in their life, and so uh, it, it touches me every year that I have the honor of being on that stage with them. And our A S O leaders this year that are moving on, my gosh, UCLA and, uh, my gosh, uh, uh, U N L B and Cal State Northridge. I, I could not be, uh, you know, what a, what a great representation they are giving to Antelope Valley Community College and uh, Rosio and I go pretty far back, um, and I am so proud. I'm going to try to hold it together. I'm so proud of this young lady, and there's no doubt in my mind that one day we're going to be reading about Rosio. She's either going to be an, an assemblywoman, or a congresswoman, or a senator. I, 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 I just know this is going to happen to her one day. President, Lady President, you bet. And, um, Corey, I, I think you're going to be, uh, just, uh, um, a breath of fresh air up here on this board, and you can just do that to Mike whenever you feel like it. If he gets out of line, just feel free. Uh, so we welcome you, Corey. I'm so excited to have you. And I, and I also want to say that I think we made a, a great choice in naming the hangar after, uh, Mr. Halliday. I, I don't know him personally, but in listening to his, uh, all of his accomplishments and his contributions toward aviation, I ca- I can't think of someone better to, um, to have been selected. And, um, I too want to welcome Dr. Jennifer Zalit, and looking forward to, um, you know, just, um, beginning a new era at Antelope Valley Community College, and to the families of our two, um, employees that we, that we've lost. My thoughts and prayers are with, with both of those families, and, um, so that's it for me this evening.
Thank you. Corey, welcome. Glad to have you aboard. If you have any questions, and I look forward to meeting with you and seeing some of your ideas and thoughts about what's going on at the college, uh, here in the future. I met with, uh, Rosio, and you're amazing. I, I, I don't know what else to say. Just an incredible board member, student board member, trustee, and is probably as good as we can. Um, I would like to say, well, the graduation was terrific. It was a record number, and I think it went incredibly, and a lot of enthusiastic people. Um, however, Jill, you're going to have to work on some of those girls, their handshakes. I mean, they've been in the gym. I'm telling you, this girl's got grips. So, um, moving along to Frank Odell, uh, I've known Frank, it seems like forever, and Frank was always, always had a smile when I walked around campus. He would pull his card over and chat for a couple of minutes. He was always chipping in at various levels and just did an amazing job, and I'm really going to miss him. Uh, I will second Mike's, uh, proposal. I, it's a great idea, and I think Frank would appreciate it. Thank you for coming tonight, and we will adjourn this meeting uh, to June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Thank you. Meeting's over.